Call me order for July 17, 2024. We'll start with the motion. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Uh, what do we roll for the job?
Yes, sir.
Rule of the agenda.
Make a multiple food agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Men's of the last meeting.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting with one change to that.
Number.
Number.
Second. All in favor? Tom, I'm sure you're weekly update.
Okay, just a couple items for you. First is just to let you know that the, uh, I did send it to you, but the APAT director has officially been, um, advertised and posted. It's running in the newspaper. We've already received, um, at least one resume, so, um, we'll start looking at those. And as they come in, Tom's the liaison, we'll schedule some interviews.
When does that close off?
Uh, closes off on the 31st.
Okay.
Uh, speaking of interviews, um, Ed, I sent you an email. We've got some scheduled with, um, Robin on Tuesday, starting at nine o'clock. We've got three of them scheduled, so that will be for the part-time transfer station position that we've had open, so we'll interview for that next week. Uh, it is everyone's favorite time of year after the town's favorite thing, audit, which is the town report. And we need to start thinking about that.
He's a poacher.
Oh, right. Yeah. Third favorite. So, uh, last year, we sent out a memo August 4th. It was a little early, but I'm gonna go for it. Uh, we use September 7th for a deadline, so I'll use a similar date, around, um, a week or so after Labor Day. But it went really well last year. We got it out a lot earlier. Um, big help was with the audit, but, uh, any changes or anything that you guys want to do as we think about town report this year?
Let me, I'll take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay, see if I, I had some thoughts, but I don't remember what it was, so.
Start thinking, um, in your minds quietly on dedication as well. Um, we're gonna talk about the parking lot because it's, uh, down under old business, but, um, wanna talk to you a little bit about the alarm system. So, the town of Acton, for 20 years that I have been here, it started as Protection One, changed to ADT, and now is a company called Evron. Um, they've had a lot of changes over the years. We've had, you know, some good years with them, some rocky years with them. We turned off all monitoring of that fitness center seven or eight years ago. When we, when we stopped using it as a gym and it turned into a little bit of storage, it essentially was shut down. I mean, they received another bill for it. They came out themselves, turned off the monitoring. Everything was done. For seven or eight years, we heard nothing about that building in regards to ADT. The minute the, uh, excavator hit the back of the wall yesterday, the alarm started going off. And it was the alarm on this building because apparently there was a wire, it was still wired into this panel that's in my office. My calls to ADT totaled about four hours on Monday, off and on. They couldn't understand or wrap their heads around the fact that because there was no service contract on the gym, that they were just not willing to come out and help us fix it. And we explained it to them over and over. David, um, was lucky enough to get conferences in with me a couple of times because I was just, my frustration level.
It was frustrating.
They just weren't understanding. I mean, we walked, walked through with them. Long story short, they eventually came out, um, about three o'clock.
It was frustrating enough that I said, "If we don't air a bill, we shut it off." And the lady's like, "Well, let's take a long time."
I mean, they, they just kept saying, you know, "We know you have an alarm going off, but we can't come out because you don't have service to that building." But the building doesn't exist. I mean, put the service call on 358 toward it. We tried everything. It was just a... The customer service, the, the problem with ADT, in my opinion, is that they do have local branches. Ours is out of Portland, but you're not allowed to communicate with them. You have to only call the call center. And I, so Monday was, I mean, the entire day was spent on the alarm. Um, they came out at three o'clock, so it, it went off if you were driving by for those eight or 10 hours on Monday. We eventually got it shut off about five o'clock. Yesterday, we came into troubles, open circuits on the trouble panels. So, yesterday, that beat for about six hours. First thing in the morning, eight-thirty, we start calling them, calling and calling. And it, it's just, it, it's not good customer service. By the end of it, um, last night, I'm gonna say seven-thirty, eight o'clock, I got a message on my machine that goes to my cellphone saying that Partition Three was in trouble and it was tied to the open circuit. So, I was back at it again today with them. I am gonna recommend to the board that they, you consider changing companies. Uh, we have a local company, um, that's out of San Fran, that I've asked them to come in Friday just to look at what we have and price it. I've spoken to ADT, they're well aware of where I'm at with this, um, and short of a sixty-day, uh, termination letter, we can get out of it. It's just, you know, I mean, there's, there's just no excuse for what has gone on these last few days, especially since they're the ones that turned the service off on the gym originally.
No, it was terrible, terrible service.
Yes, uh, I don't know what company you're thinking about. There's one I'd suggest you look at, Seacoast Security.
Okay.
Uh, there's a technician actually in Chappell who's excellent. And so there'd be somebody locally, and, um, you call and you get a response. You can talk to someone, tell you what they're doing.
I know what, uh, I know exactly who that is. I didn't say that, so yeah, I'll be talking to him as well. So, just letting you know that I'm working on that. Um, oh, the Sheriff's Department also contacted me. We had, or the board had okayed, uh, two traffic details in June, if you remember.
Yes.
We had booked some. They only ended up doing one because of the emergency, so they're asking now if we want to, um, reschedule that. I mean, we're in a new fiscal year. If you wanna hold off a while or what your thoughts are.
If we do it, uh, two a month for the rest of the year for the coming fiscal year or this fiscal year, do we have enough money in the budget to do that?
Well, you don't have it, you don't have enough out of the dispatch line because that line is, was governed just for what the contract was.
Do we have another line that we can fund it?
I could, I'd have to take a look, and it's early, but.
I, I've gotten feedback that people like the extra detail. I'm sure there are people that don't, maybe got, you got nabbed, but, um, kind of forgot that.
Yeah, I think, I, I would do it, at least fill the one in that they didn't. Yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, it's just, you know, the way that we really tightened up the budget this year and assuming that everything is spoken for something, right?
Well, let's, let's, let's continue to do it.
Yep.
I think summertime is probably the most important time to do it because that's when most of the, the traffic is around. And, uh, um, so I would continue. I don't know how you are.
Definitely, yeah. Labor Day.
And I do think we ought to also.
Yeah, Labor Day or a week after, yeah.
And, and I think we ought to resurrect the concept of, um, the upcoming contract renewal. And what are we gonna do? And do we just wanna continue to renew a contract with, uh, York County Sheriff? Or do we wanna look at establishing some capability on our own? I personally think that would be a good thing to investigate. I don't know what it would cost and so on, but I think, I think Acton, just listening to these reports, there are some dangerous situations.
There is. We're not getting any smaller.
No, and, and it's really dangerous stuff.
It is.
And I, I'd be more comfortable if we had our own, uh, police force. I'll be honest with you.
Would you consider your own deputy or more police force?
I, I don't know.
We could get number one.
I think we got three options that we should be looking at. Either you continue on the same path or, or you take the deputy that, you know, go with Sheriff's.
We buy a whole deputy.
Buy a whole one.
Yeah.
Or we do a, oh, we're talking about this for a little while.
Yeah.
Possibly, uh.
All right, well, we know we only have a one-year contract, so we'll let you enjoy a little more.
That expires when?
December, so we'll make sure it doesn't stay up.
Of course, it always has to, the Sheriff's Department comes back with us.
Right, as to what they wanna do.
Right, because last year, you know, they kinda kept us a limbo a little bit.
All right, I'll, um, sorry, I'll have a little bit behind the scenes. All right, I think that's, um, all I have for you.
Okay.
We have updates, Tom. I think most of my time, Warren Finance hasn't met yet. APAT, um, we're really, uh, working on this, this open position. With the guidance is, um, continue to do some refinement by, through Mark Roy of our fiscal year results, they continue to be positive. We're not ready to sort of release those results yet, probably once the auditors get done their field work and kinda confirm where we stand, that's when I would release them, but, um, things look positive. I'll leave it that way. And we spent a lot of time today working with Mark, uh, and, um, our treasurer and, and Jennifer to sort of, uh, shore up some of our accounting procedures. And I thought it went very well.
Very well.
I think Lauren appreciated it, I know Mark did, so, uh, we'll just continue to do that and try to develop the training in that area, uh, as we go. That's it.
Sure. Let's see, nothing really new on the transfer station side. These guys are just getting skid stairs, rented skid steer up there, they're getting mine right now.
We wanna make sure, Ed, not to interrupt you, that that doesn't fall off the radar, so we know that they're looking at another month, three would be their max.
Yep.
You know, so some point, depending on what happens.
Yep, last time I talked to Robin, well, actually, it was last Friday, he was hoping to have the specs for the new skid.
Oh, so he's working on specs, some kind of.
Yeah, and he's working with it, working with, uh, Will.
On specs of what they need.
Yeah, talking to specs.
And then we'll go up to bid, is that right? I didn't know the board's.
Yeah, I think when we get it, I'll be able to come over. Just to thank you a lot.
I think we, uh, indicated that a new skid steer is probably fifty to sixty.
Correct.
I believe you can get a relatively, uh, low-used U-F in the thirties with a warranty. And low use, like, five to eight hundred hours. That's almost cutting it, you know, maybe by forty to fifty percent in price. And, uh, I think we should consider. I don't know how many hours we put on a, on that machine in a year. Robin, do you know?
Do you know how many hours are on it now?
Huh? No, on the, on the oval?
Yeah.
No, not right off the top of my head.
Did we get that back yet?
No.
One thing, one thing you've gotta do, especially with the new stuff, the old stuff, you know, that you didn't have to worry about, that fluid and all that crap. Biggest thing is now is your warranties. The longer the warranty, especially with all the stuff, fluid and, uh.
It's my understanding the new ones are also highly computerized.
Very highly.
And they, they, when those go down, it gets very expensive. And maintenance is what's extremely important. Are you gonna get somebody to come out onsite and fix it right away, or are you gonna be backed up for two weeks without anyone coming? So, there are some of those that I, I think Bobcat's got a great reputation for that. So, we should consider all options.
Anybody that you buy, we buy a machine off, has to be able to come over.
On-site service.
On-site service.
Maybe even a service contract.
My understanding is like Kuboto and John Deere doesn't do that. Maybe they do here. Okay, good, let's go.
Mary Grant's working on a, uh, they had a meeting last Saturday. I wasn't able to attend to the company, but they're working on a really good program for their picnic in a couple of weeks. Uh, they got some live music and lots of good things there. What else have I got? The animal control officer, I met with him briefly this afternoon. He was, he came in to pick some stuff up. Uh, things are going good with him, uh, getting used to his new position and whatnot. Find it quite interesting, so.
He sounds like he has a good common sense of handling issues.
Yeah.
That's great.
Yep. Yep. That's all I got.
All right. I got nothing with the, with the schools right now. Planning Boyd meets tomorrow. The cemetery committee, I reached out to Steve Perillo, and, uh, they have a cleanup coming up this Sunday, uh, from ten to one, next to 284 Goose Pond Road. Hope to get some people out there. I know they've had, I guess they've got a message string that goes out to a lot of volunteers, and he's hoping to get, uh, some people to volunteer to adopt the cemetery. You know, go mow it, take care of any downed branches.
Like a Dr. Highway type, you know?
Yeah, kinda like that, yeah, yeah.
Do you, um, do you have that, like, email that you've communicated? Because we could still probably get that in our newsletter that goes out tomorrow and on the website. I had no idea they were meeting, so.
Oh, well, they're not meeting.
I mean, well, they're planning to win that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, if we're trying to get volunteers on the website and newsletter is a great way.
Then I'll, I'll, I'll reach back out to him, but I'll send you, um, what I, what I've got.
Just forward to me now.
Yeah, yeah. That's, that's all I've got.
And the school did, um, I think it was CC.
Last week.
They were, um, John Ross reached out to me regarding the new principal, and, um, just looking at a timeline of bringing him into his life board meeting in late August, early September, so that you guys can meet him.
I guess so.
Yeah, I guess we have one?
He was hired, yes.
Oh, okay.
First I run about it.
Yeah. Was that announced?
I don't know how they, what their hiring process is.
Thank you.
Okay, well, uh, we had a little committee there a couple weeks ago. I think I've already mentioned that one there. So, I guess municipal grounds, we got the, you've got something signed.
Uh, we're working on getting something signed. We're drafting it up and my mind's reviewing.
Yeah.
I think, and we did announce that they were so tickled pink and thankful that you guys are doing all that, but David, given since the last meeting, asked me to get something in writing.
Yeah, I wanted to get something.
For the church, yeah.
Church, yeah.
We're working with Mike to draft that up.
Yep, and municipal grounds, obviously, there's something missing in the front yard. Building's gone.
This looks great.
Yeah, looks wonderful.
The Curtis, uh, did a great job, headed out, I think.
He did technically, I learned.
Wow.
I did follow that.
The one that signs the checks. The Curtis asked me to do a real good job over there. Uh, they're right about this one day. And I think they keep the next day, put some fresh gravel down.
Yeah. We're just parking on it.
Yep, so thank you for getting that done. Uh, I don't think I've got anything else on.
No, I did, um, regarding the municipal grounds, we did reach out to the, uh, company in Lebanon, you know, in regards to the road assessment.
Oh, yep.
So, we're waiting for a response, and until we get to the DOT, you don't have much going on with the parking lot.
Nope.
And the transfer station project is just kinda tabled for now, right?
Okay.
Back to the building coming down. Everybody will notice the sign up front's not lit. That was tied to that building.
Yeah.
So, we, we worked something there, so.
Yeah, we're gonna have to see if, uh, we can figure out who, or we can get Mr. Norman does our electrical enders and see how, um, well, we're, I think, is that on?
It's on the agenda.
It's on the agenda, so we'll get to it at that point, we'll discuss the rest of that, I guess. So, Department Head, Committee Chair, updates. See any? We have a old business parking lot, and we go there.
All right, so, I guess, I put this on here, um, we're trying to go with the next second, so what do you wanna do with it from here, where you see us going with it?
Well, I mean, uh, I, I think what we really ought to do at this point in time, uh, is at least patch in the area that we disturbed so that it can be plowed and parked on for this coming winter. We really have to figure out exactly what, what we want to do long-term, but if we do that, we're still probably a year or two away from doing that.
Major project?
And, uh, a major project, whether or not we put an election hall in or something like that. We, we still probably ought to patch that. And, uh, that help down there, probably figure out what we're gonna do with that, so, um, so obviously, we got paving bits coming out tonight. Maybe we can get a price from whoever, uh, lowest bid is, and, uh, maybe get that paved in, just about.
Would that just be the area where it was, uh?
Yeah.
It's open now?
So, the hill would have to stay or come?
Well, I'm okay with that. I just, I didn't, I needed to look at it on the way in, but, uh, obviously, we don't wanna, that would, it would be nice if that was going.
Yeah.
And make it a lot easier with it, plow that, yeah. So, I'll, I'll take a look at it, and I'll take a look at it with Will, we figure something out there.
And do we know, and so regarding the sign, because before, if we decided to pave it, where is the wire, do we know?
We're gonna have to run a new wire.
Probably, yeah.
Spice it anyways, so if we can get somebody, uh, I'd have somebody with, and then may have ditched, which would maybe be the best thing, then, to run a new wire.
Actually, that'd be easiest.
Easiest, I mean, you know, somebody that'd have to cut across the paved parking lot.
There's a couple here in town, so.
Yeah. And, uh, so, obviously, that was, be something we'd, we'd want to do anyways, but I don't think.
The electrician won't do any of that work, he'll just run it once the ditch is.
He'll run it. I don't think, you know, they typically don't dig it when they do it. It's rare, but, uh, I think we could, we can locate somebody to dig it and, uh, get the wire. I don't think that's gonna affect the parking lot any, because I think you better off rolling it over the breast spot anyways, so.
But maybe we could do that in the hump at the same time?
Yeah.
We had a, uh, a budget for the parking lot?
Yeah, I believe there was eighty-five in there.
Eighty-five, so we'll pay for the demolition, we'll pay for the paving out of that, right? And there, there should be a balance left over?
Yeah.
I would imagine there's a balance left over. And I, I didn't know if that had any specific restrictions on it. Personally, I think we ought to do something with the streetscape. Uh, you know, this, this is actually a very attractive set of buildings here when you look at them now compared to what they look like with that other building in front of them. I, I, I would suggest we get in touch with a, a landscape firm and have them come take a look at this, and maybe do some kind of a, uh, you know, a retaining wall out front with a wooden sign with a light that says Town of Acton, some lawn out there, just make it look.
Beautify it.
Make it look, uh, something that we're proud of. And I, I don't think we'd take a lot of money. We got the money in the budget. We're doing this work now, we're doing the work over here. It, it seems to me we could tie that all together and just spit the place out.
You can still do that without interfering with.
No, that's right. I, I don't think it would. I, and it wouldn't interfere with future building sites either. It just, just around the exterior.
Get some more dirt, get some grass.
Yeah.
We're gonna talk to the road commissioner about using salt in this parking lot as well.
Salt instead of sand?
No, we'll see.
So, so, so do you want, is he nodding?
He's hiding. He's circling around.
So, I'm thinking that we want to put together some sort of bid to, to beautify the.
So, you really can't do that?
Because the problem is, how do you put a bid out where you don't have an actual?
You don't know what you're gonna do.
One way of doing it is to just invite two or three landscapers in and take a look at the site. What do you think we could do here? We don't have to hire any design people. They could, the landscaper.
Say we all go serious.
Let them in and give us, and get a couple of ideas, and then from there, you could put together a bid.
There's probably somebody in town that has, uh, landscape design capabilities, uh, you know?
Most of them have it now.
What do you mean? Even just a resident, somebody that might wanna do it for the town.
So, we can, uh, set an invitation date to meet.
Yeah.
All right, so Tom, we'll actually.
You, you bring it, that would give us the idea.
That's right. So, we bring it to them three or once and let them look at it and do one more.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, so I'm gonna set up an invitation walkthrough and we'll have it scheduled. Uh, I think that's it for the parking lot.
Okay, so I'm gonna move down to Blueberry Hill contract.
All right, so last week, um, was Tom's.
So, are we gonna, sorry about that. Are we gonna move on about paving this parking lot? Is that something we wanna do?
Yeah, definitely.
So, um, at this point in time, do you want me to contact whoever the, uh, pave, work with Will and the paving contractor, and we'll get that paved and see what we knew about the hump?
It's, it seems to me that, that was exactly what the money was appropriated for. So, this is, this concept has already been approved by the townspeople, so we're just executing the paperwork.
Yeah, I'm just okay with you guys.
I'm just trying to make a play to people while we're doing this.
I just wanna be sure that, uh, we'll move forward.
As long as it's done by winter, sure.
Yeah, okay, awesome. Okay, we'll go back to the Blueberry Hill contract, thank you.
So, um, last week, Tom made a, a good point in regards to, uh, the cleanup. So, just to remind you, so we've made a couple of changes. It's only a five-year contract. It has gone up to $500 a month rather than four. We've given them ninety days from the day of the signed contract to clean up what's currently on site. And then it says if the lessor fails to remove the prohibited items or continues, the leasee shall be entitled to remove them at the lessor's expense, which will be offset against rental payments due under this lease.
And that's a right we have going forward?
Correct.
Two years from now, there's a mess, we give ninety days notice?
Ongoing.
Okay.
So, we ready to sign? All right. So, someone else can make a motion to sign that page?
Can I have the top page? To see who it is, who it is we're signing it with? I'll, I'll make a motion that we enter into a lease extension, uh, for the Blueberry Hill property at a monthly rate of $500, uh, for a period of five years. Anything else, Hannah?
Just the name of the property, that's where the payments go.
Property owner is Don Leaneham.
Second.
All in favor?
It's this last page?
Uh, there's a couple of places we're signature, so. All right, start that. So, it is being notarized, so I need to ask you all if you understand what you're signing and signing it under your own free will.
Yes.
The pages.
Standing.
Okay, main DOT offer.
All right, so last week, the main Department of Transportation was before you took over their offer of the area that they're gonna take by, um, domain and $1,000. You wanted twenty-four hours just to review it. Any questions, comments?
No, we really didn't have any choice in the matter.
No, really.
And really, they could take it, I mean, I mean, they have every right to work on it, use it, they might allow it.
That's what like Tom said, take a thousand dollars.
Yep.
Easy, take it or you don't. And, but they're gonna do it anyways.
So, there's two forms that you have to sign. Um, the first is the actual agreement. It's only gonna place for two, but you'll need to all please sign it. And then the acknowledgement of explanations, this is the things, ACG that they presented to you last week. Somebody needs to at least initially each one of those, and then the full board needs to sign.
Do we need a motion on this? And so the motion would be to accept, uh, or, or to, i- i- accept a $1,000 payment from the Department of Transportation for the state of Maine, uh, in consideration in consideration for them taking property associated with the expansion of 109 next to our athletic.
Good town.
Okay.
Second, that's a motion. Second. All in favor?
Did you look at this question?
Yes, she went over each one of them last week.
Well, okay. It seems fine to me.
Well, it's gonna matter anyway.
I had a thought that said you can negotiate that, but just take it, not give you the money.
No one will ever be able to figure out these issues anyway, so it doesn't matter. That's a T M C, remember that. I think it's.
I think it was. Did you notice we gave you our fan?
Yeah, I don't need that, but that's okay, thank you.
Okay, new business, fire department. Look at this guy, he's got the.
Man, this is good stuff.
Spend money, he's happy.
Oh, before you get started, we did, we did try to go further with the tower deal, it just didn't.
Oh, yeah.
Wasn't able to.
Figure it out.
Yeah.
Figure it out.
We figured something in place was better than.
Yes, can't go without it.
Nope. We tried, we did.
With that, with that same property, I'm working with the MA to secure us a generator and then to get the electrical stuff updated in there. So all we have to do is pull it out of that building and plug it in and wire it up.
Nice.
Working, work progress. So, I'm here tonight. A few months ago, I came before the board to apply for a grant. Received the grant of $50,000.
From?
From the Stephen and Tabitha King Foundation. Thanks. Through that grant process, I had to specifically apply for something. It's not just spend it on wherever you want. I put in for a new SCBA fill station to fill our SCBA models. Breathe in our air pack that we breathe out from, fills those models whenever we use them. And so, yeah.
How do you feel now?
Pretty excited.
How do you feel now?
We have a fill station that was donated to us by.
Your client?
Okay.
Probably, how many years ago?
Hmm, probably 2003.
And it was old then.
It was probably late eighties then. I'm sure you're probably the one.
Yes.
Are you gonna donate years to maybe chat with them? Is it about to have one?
I'm not gonna recommend it for fire use based on.
Can you fill, uh, scuba tanks with that?
Yes, you probably could, yes.
Uh, S P A and Navy, uh, other lakes, they're doing diving for snails, invasive snails and things. I don't know where they go to get their tanks filled now, but if you're, if you're looking for someplace that might be interested, I don't know if you're certified to run it or whatever.
When we do, they all have to the new one right here. I do know that the current, I forget who services it now, Tur- Turco or something, I forget the business. I got the name of the station, but when he comes to service it every year, he's always like, when you guys know you're ready for this, we probably can find somebody to purchase it.
Well, and remember, there's a warrant article that talks about disposing of the rest of its value.
Not even there yet.
But we're just excited to get $50,000 to hold in the new one down.
Yeah, so, uh, the other part of this, I'd like to execute the purchase of the new one. The grant is $450,000. Through my extensive research and talking with area departments, I have chosen, uh, and would like to recommend, uh, the Arctic Air Compressor brand. Alfred has it, Sanford has it, Wells has it, uh, a lot of York County has it. I'm not sure what York has, but, uh, it's been highly recommended. This company that we do tons of business with already has provided us with the quote. But I do have one issue. The quote, uh, is $49,228 installed. And you guys just talked about it with the tractor transfer station, but I'd like to buy the extended warranty, which, uh, is $3,685, which that would obviously put us at $52,913.
How many years?
Five years, bumper to bumper, everything.
What's the warranty that comes with that?
Two years.
Two years.
Says by the selection rate. So, we're going then, I guess, before we make a decision. That puts us obviously over the grant, so my, my recommendation is spend obviously $50,000 over the grant. And then the difference, I have a good cover out of my operating budget, out of the SCBA line that's already in the budget.
What line is that?
It's Fire Department Self-Containment Breathing Apparates.
So you already have a lot for that?
Yeah, it's where I pull the maintenance out of, are, out of that for the current one. That's also where we get some of the other airbag stuff serviced out of that line. So I'd like to use that difference, which if comes down to it, should be about, uh, this rough number this year, uh, $2,300 bucks. Cause twenty, yeah, $2,300.
So obviously, $50,000, I have no issue with.
But you did get other bids, right?
The other quotes, one gave me a fifty, one's, for apples to apples, one's a fifty, one's a $57,000, and that's not with any extra warranties.
So this is the cheapest one anyways. Does this come back, you would prefer having, and it's the cheapest one?
Correct.
The only glitch we have here is the extended warranty goes over $50,000, which I have no problem pulling out of the.
And you're, you like it.
This is a, this is a really good deal for the town, but this is pretty cool.
It's really like a thousand dollars for a year for the extra three years.
Does this include new cascade bottles as well?
New cascade bottles, new fill station.
The whole thing?
A double fill station. We put two bottles in, fill at the same time, four bottles and the compressor.
Nice.
The whole setup.
And the new one's gonna be, put the bottles in, close the doors?
Yeah.
All explosion proof, follow?
Correct. So all up to standard, whereas currently does not, uh, has all the new requirements for the power of an oxide monitoring. And, uh, that's stuff that we have to have. Obviously gets tested every year, serviced every year, just like we do now.
So, what was the co, what was the price on the, uh, the act jack compressor?
$49,228.68.
Okay, so, so you're gonna just use the $50,000 on that?
Yeah.
And what's the difference that you got to pull out?
Twenty-three?
Yeah, about $2,300, yes.
We're not making a motion on this.
Well, I'm gonna, we're just gonna make a motion, we can just say as presented with the name of the company.
That's what I was trying to get, the exact number, so we can.
We have to make a motion to approve the purchase.
Yes.
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 It's through Bergeron Protective Clothing. The same people we use for our turtle gear. They're also an MSA dealer, which is, uh, it's not who we purchased the packages at the time, but they, uh, they sell all our airbag stuff.
It's a good selling company. So with the, with some of our T, everything was total, is there a total total?
$52,913.68.
Fifty-two, nine, thirteen, sixty-eight?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion. We approve the air compressor, uh, for the fire department with the five-year warranty at Twenty-three hundred being pulled out of the fire department's, uh, air compressor line and the $50,000 being spent from the grant.
Second, all in favor? Good job.
Can I?
Thank you.
Excited.
Can I quote something?
Can I get you a fresh copy? Because I've got notes on this one. I can give you this one.
That's fine. I just like have a minutes, so I have something.
Yeah, I can figure this out, I just.
Good job, Wayne, thanks.
You got anything else?
Uh, not right now.
Cool. Thank you.
Couple of units on that.
Guess we're gonna go to paving bids.
Okay, so we have been out, we mailed it to three, six, seven, eight, nine, ten companies, ran it in the newspaper, from everywhere we always have. So this was sealed bids for paving roads through June 30th, 2025. Dayton, Sam and Graham. Okay, asphalt per ton, $98, handwork, $165, curving, $13 per foot, linear foot, and reclaiming at $0.50 per square foot.
So $28 per foot?
Next one is from Carroll Materials. Um, Carroll Materials, per ton, $96.10, handwork at $218, curving per ton is $320, reclaiming is $0.36.
What is reclaiming?
Well, we did a.
Catch the line, which, I, that's what I thought, okay.
So I'm just curious. So the first one, the Dayton, curving per linear foot was $13, but the curving per ton is $320. So how many linear feet are a ton?
You dragged me, is that?
Yeah, I just hear.
You're awesome. Uh, approximately 25 feet. It'll, it'll, depending on the mold, but it could be 23 to 20, 26 feet.
So we take 25 times 13.
So really, at the end of the day. We did ask for a per ton.
Yes.
The, the, really, the problem is with these, with those, those numbers for the reclaiming and the curbing. I, the number we really, really.
The per ton weight?
It's a per ton weight, because that's what you use 99% of your money for. But it is a nice, all the other numbers too.
Uh, something else I might add, just your, your knowledge, typically reclaiming is done by the square yard. And, and your bid is, I've always run since I've been involved, and you guys have always run by the square foot. So your square yard price would be times nine.
Yeah.
People freak out when they see 180,000 feet, and that's, it just hasn't evolved.
They just, when we advertise and things like that.
If that's the way it typically is done by the yard, should we change that in the future?
Probably.
Yeah, I mean, Will just has to tell me a few months later.
He can handle it this time, but in the future, let's.
It probably goes back twenty years.
Who has the bid now? Who are we using now?
Carroll.
Carroll. Alright, and Shaw Brother. I'm just gonna redo it, says. 19.0 mm HMA, 105, 9.5 mm HMA, 115. Is that one of the per, is that per ton weight number?
So they're doing, they're giving us a detail of each 19 mill.
So the 19 millimeters is a three-quarter base.
Is that what these other two are?
Uh, no, because you guys, in the bidding process, you, you asked for per ton weight, so. So the other two bids have given you actual per ton, they didn't break it out as what's.
So we can't, we really.
Well, they gave us per ton weight, $98.
Well, what they've done, we give $98 per ton for base or finish.
Right.
What they've done is they're breaking it out, three-quarter, half, whatever, three-eighths.
All having different prices?
Different prices, so they didn't give us, so we really can't.
I mean, quite.
It's happened.
They're quite a lot higher.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, and quite honestly, and I'm, you know, if, in the conversation, you guys can have Will off the record or on the record if they want. I mean, this company is still cheaper regardless of which way you look at it, so.
Which company?
The company we're using now, Allstate is $96.10, Dayton is $98.
Is that Carroll? Carroll is the one we're using now.
Allstate.
Oh, is that the same?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
Allstate Carroll, $96.10, Dayton's at $98, and Shaw Brothers is gonna range from 105 to 200 depending on the thickness. So like you said, it's kind of irrelevant, but I don't know, Will wants to come up on top of his experience with Allstate?
We're only getting three?
Only got three. You wanna come up?
This should be easy with this year, huh? Yeah, just me. Yeah, I got no problem going with Carols again. Charlie's great to work with, so. They're fantastic. They can get us right in, so I got no problem going with Carols.
Can we make the decision right on this, instead of pulling it in?
I'd say.
I wanna make a motion.
What was this, I, I'm sorry, I gotta ask. What was the second item that was, I think, hand Carroll was $218. What is that for?
That's just hand place, so if, if I go out and have to pad, quite honestly, typically, we rarely have hardly any.
Okay, so we don't spend a lot on it, 'cause the other vendor was cheaper, but overall project cost, it's a small item?
Yeah, it's a very, very minimal item. As a matter of fact, uh, I don't think we had any handwork on what you ordered, that's $16,000 people, so.
Next time, we'll be.
Or make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we go with Carroll slash F, uh, FI Carroll slash Allstate. For $96.10 on the bid.
Except that's recommended by the road agent?
Second. All in favor?
Alright, ladies.
And Mr. and Mrs.?
Uh, when you get five seconds, if you could, uh, just send me a quick email stating that we were awarded, and I'll get you guys put into the system, and I'll meet with Will. And if you need me to look at that parking lot, we know about that as well.
That'd be great. Yeah, we'd like to get that painted in at some point.
Yeah.
Uh, that, and we'll look at that hump, and we'll take that hump off at the same time and we bash that in, so.
I can give you my thoughts and ideas.
Yep, that'd be good.
Whenever you, you talk to Will and find out what's good for you, and I'll come over and.
Yeah, okay.
What's the email address, there's no contact here?
I'm sorry.
What's the email address?
Uh, C. Emerson, E. M. E. R. S. O. N. A. S. M. G. Adam Sam, MaryGeorge.com. A. S. M. G.
Say it out loud.
A. S. M. G.
M. G., okay.
Yeah.
We're, we're almost done, this meeting, I can, we can do it tonight, huh, Paul?
If you guys wanna wait, then I'll, I'll, I'll.
Oh, you wait a minute, I'll come, I'll meet you there.
And then we'll be done here in a few minutes, so.
Dumb enough.
Uh, it'd be awesome if we could do that. Saves us a lot of time. Okay, uh, done with the paving bid, public call?
Before, before we get started on the public comment, uh, I think we've mentioned a couple of times now that, uh, when the board goes into executive session, um, the cameras and the microphones continue to be live. And I know I have received a number of comments, and some of them outside of the town, where people, I guess a number of people listened to a conversation that took place last week.
Lengthy.
Lengthy conversation, and, um, yeah, I think it's fair to say they were troubled by the conversation, but you know, it's just two people expressing their point of view, it's kind of fine with them. They have the right to do that. However, I would encourage people that if they have views about town government, what's working, what's not working, to select them, what's, what are they doing that you like or you don't like?
Towns fat.
That podium is there for that reason. We wanna hear from you. I can guarantee you'll be treated with respect, and those opinions will be heard, but I ask that you share them with us. That's the only way we're gonna know what people are thinking, okay? And we'll try to take that into account in the way we do business. So be aware that microphone is on and people are listening, okay?
That, and I think Jen brought a pretty good point, the staff.
Staff.
Oh, yeah, please do, but don't talk about staff.
Uh, that's a no-no, and.
Technically being brought up in a live meeting.
Yeah.
Even though we're not here, the meeting is still on, it's still live.
And unfortunately, you know, probably don't, you know, when everybody leaves, you know, breaks up, okay, they don't realize they're being listened to, but you're being listened to. I hate that. We can't shut it off during the meeting, because you shut it, it stops the meeting.
Well, it looks like they found a way around it. That's gonna be your.
Well, as of right now.
As of now, right?
I, I don't care, I would still not, if you gotta have a conversation, go outside, don't do it in here.
But don't force us to get to the point where we have to have someone in here listening to shut the thing down if it gets out of here. So, uh, so now I'm gonna give you the opportunity to come and speak. Uh, public comment? None?
Nope.
Yeah, one is.
I'm just curious, on Moose Pond Road, there is a, is that ours? There's a speed thingy?
It's in Acton.
Is that, that's?
We share that one.
Is that the town's?
Well, we have two. I mean, Chappell is, it's still on Backwood, but for business, so that's the ours on the phone.
Yeah, I think it's.
Oh, okay, because I know there was talk about getting one fixed or new.
We did.
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Something like that. But that's ours? Great thing, it's good.
Yes, it'll be there.
Okay, good to know.
It's been there for quite a while.
It's been there for a long time.
I think we should move it around.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, 'cause after a while, people just ignore it.
I've had requests that I forward it to Jennifer.
Which is great.
Yeah, that was what I was gonna ask you, because it's been there at least a month, I would think, and, uh, you know, if it.
It's like a street side, you leave it there too long.
Yeah.
You get used to it, and, um, doesn't mean I split it, but, you know, you get used to it, being there. And, um, but I'm glad to see it, because it does work. Thanks.
And a little public comment? I don't see any. You have a part of the meeting right here?
Make a motion, you're trying?
Second. All in favor?
That was how you want it, right?